All right, it is 1:00 PM on February 7th. And this is a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. And it is 1:02 PM, so we will go ahead and get started. I've copied and pasted the agenda in the chat for anyone that's joined us. So if everyone will turn their phones off, we've got Patrick from the paper with us in the in the audience, and that's it. So with that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. So if you'll join me in that, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Okay. All right. Perfect. Okay. So moving on, approval of the agenda. So I think we need to make a couple of arrangements on the agenda to move some things around. The FCI agreement needs to be moved to the February 23rd meeting. So we'll take that off and everything will move up one space. Commissioner Feeler or Mudge, is there anything else that we need to make adjustments on on the agenda? That's it? Yep. All right, so I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we will move into public comments on items not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your public comments to three minutes and that your comments are respectful. It is not necessarily an opportunity to engage with the board, but rather to bring to our attention anything that you might want us to realize through your allotted time for public comments. So is there anyone in the Zoom room with us that has any public comments? You can raise your hand. And we will acknowledge your comments. No? Oh, Colleen. Sure, Colleen Nielsen, our Director of Public Health.
Hey, guys, just here today to let you know kind of where, oh, I'm sorry, was I not supposed to go?
Nope. No, you're good. You're good.
Okay, so I am just here to let you guys know kind of where we're at with COVID. As we all are aware, we had a big spike like the rest of the state due to Omicron. We have been seeing cases go down pretty dramatically where we're averaging about 12 cases a week versus the height of Omicron, we had about 108. So obviously, that is a great difference. We still have some really great tools for us as we kind of move forward and try to figure out what that resilience pieces for our community, what we are looking to do as far as next steps. So we continue to have vaccines in our toolbox, masking, social distancing, there are now more effective treatments, there are some coming online as well. And so we continue to ask folks to think about what their personal responsibility is, how they can protect themselves using any of those tools that I just mentioned. And we do have ongoing vaccine clinics happening at our public health agency, usually Wednesdays for vaccinating folks for COVID, as well as just our regular day-to-day services. So as we kind of come into the warmer months, and if we see the same trend that we saw before, as far as decreased cases, more folks having the opportunity to go outside, then we really have to think about, you know, kind of moving away from a pandemic phase to this is our day-to-day. How do we live? How do we decrease risks and take on that responsibility individually?
All right, thank you very much, Colleen. Does anybody have any questions for Colleen that's in the room? Sarah, Jeff?
No, I don't.
Tim, Chris, you guys have?
Thank you.
I do have the comment from?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Colleen.
Yes.
We have a public comment received.
We have one more public comment received and an email. So you're good, Colleen. Oh, Tim, did you want to just unmute yourself and?
Okay. I received public comment from a community member who asks, well, posed this as a question, but also public comment of may funding be made available for autism services in Lechville?
All right, thank you for that. Is there any other public comment before we move on? No? Chris, you have anything? No? All right. All right, saying nothing further, we will move on to Commissioner Updates and Clarifications. Commissioner Feeler, do you have anything today?
Uh, no, nothing for me.
All right, Commissioner Mudge?
Not a whole lot, just continuing fuel mitigation, wrapping up the CWPP Community Wildfire Protection Plan process with the mapping. Have had some awesome subgroup meetings with folks working to nail down a scope of work that we can go out for future applications on. And it's, I'm looking forward to organizing more community outreach to subdivisions and then really engaging, engaging folks.
Cool.
Thanks.
Yeah. For me, just continuing work on the transit feasibility study. We've got some preliminary data that will be shared with us this week, and then we'll move forward from there. So that's, that's all I've got as well. All right, so with that, we'll move into new business. We'll move into number one, which is the RFQ for the selection of land analysis engineering firm. So I'm going to hand it over to Anne Schneider from Building and Land Use to talk us through this.
Thank you, Board. So today, we're actually just bringing you an update on the, from the Land Advisory Committee. We had four proposals submitted, and we are in the process of scheduling interviews with those four firms and looking to bring a recommendation to the Board on the meeting on the 23rd of February. Unfortunately, our facilitator, Mark Sabatini, is no longer available to facilitate the process. However, collectively between staff and SCUD, we are in the process of continuing and moving forward with scheduling those interviews. And then SCED will also help us through the facilitation of the Land Advisory Committee. So we've had a small change in the facilitation, but things are progressing still on target. And Michael is here if you have any questions for him as well.
Great, thank you. Michael, did you have anything to add for us?
You know what, nothing to add on that. We are on target to keep the process rolling. We know how important this is, so you know, wish Mark the best, and we'll certainly be able to assist through the existing scope of services we already had. And then I guess, Kayla, only I know, are you, you serve on the Economic Development Corporation Board. We would love to ensure that a representative serves on the Land Advisory Committee and Mark's stay. So if we could just follow up on that.
Sure. Michael, did you want to send me an email about that offline, and I can get you connected, and we can ensure that there's a representative there for you? Okay, thank you. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Anne or Michael on the process or where we're at, or the progress that we're making?
I don't think so. Pretty straightforward. Thank you, guys.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so moving on to number two, which is the Board of Review Appointment. I'm going to also ask Anne for her information on the Board of Review.
Thank you, Kayla. The Board of Review still needs the appointments made for 2022. This is a five-person board with one alternate position as well. The expiring members of the Board were Hope Holtzit, Matt Bullock, Ethan Kirk, and Luke Hornig. Oh, excuse me, Matt is, is, is a new interested member. So it was the other three. I did submit to the Board all of the letters of interest from all four members. These are three-year terms. And currently seated are Cameron Millard and Charlie Benny. So we are looking to seat three regular members for three-year terms, alternating terms, and then one alternate. Alternating terms with the currently appointed members.
Okay. Do you have a recommendation of who we should seat?
Do not have a recommendation due to the fact that three of the applicants are are, we have been previously seated, and so we, they all obviously are advocating for them for one another, and so it was hard to come to a consensus on seating on all of those members again.
Anne, I'm sorry, I know you did send us those letters. Could you just throw me that list? There's four, the four interested for the three seats?
Yes.
Again?
So we're expiring were Ethan Kirk, Luke Hornig, and Hope Holtzit. And the new interested member is Matt Bullock.
Okay. All right. So it's, it's really just kind of up to us to decide who we want to place on there, yeah?
Each of them, you know, shared a little bit of, you know, why they are interested in. So yes, I forwarded those to you, and we don't have a direct recommendation other than there is the possibility for all four to be considered for, for spots on the Board, which, you know, is, is a nice alignment.
Okay. Great.
And who do we have to do a, an alternate position, Anne, to include all four of them? Okay.
We just have to have one to be an alternate.
So, yeah, so one of those four has to be selected as an alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll be, I'll be, Anne, do you see a problem with adding an alternate position? I would, I would be in favor of that.
So the bylaws already call for five regular and one. So, yep, you can see all four of them in possession positions. Yep.
Great. Right.
I mean, just reading the letters and thinking about, I, just for discussion, I've been thinking that the three returning members had served well, and, and, and they are working on stuff, so sort of for continuity to maintain the three current members for new terms and bring Matt Bullock on as an alternate.
Okay, I think that's a fair, fair recommendation. Commissioner?
Agreed.
Agree. Especially with the, some of the code changes and that they have been working on, like you said, it's pretty big.
And also, like I just, for full disclosure, Matt Bullock was a general contractor on my house, so that's done and whatever, but there's a relationship there.
Great. Um, all right, so I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll move to appoint as full regular members. Ethan, I, thank you, Luke Hornig and Hope Colitz. And as an alternate, Matt Bullock.
One second. All right. Any further discussion?
None for me.
No?
Thanks for coordinating that, Anne.
Absolutely.
So we'll get our resolution also updated with the terms, Anne. And redo that at our February 23rd meeting to update the Board of Review on our annual resolution with the correct terms.
Great, that sounds perfect.
Okay, so seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Okay, all right. Tim, I'll get with you to get that resolution updated with the terms to put on our 23rd agenda. Okay, number three is the renewal of the retail marijuana cultivation facility license for JEM Dutch Acres. So Patty, if you'll give us just kind of a brief update, and if there's any any issues or anything that you'd like us to know about with the, the license renewal?
There's no issues.
Okay.
This is their annual renewal. They are making no changes to it. They have paid the $500 renewal fee. Everything appears to be in order. It's required by the state to submit a letter, so I always write him a letter that says that they are exempt from a business license because the county doesn't have business licenses. And so this will get back to Matt, and he should be able to renew it at the state level. He has to have local approval before it goes to the state.
Okay.
And I have the whole packet if you'd like to look at it.
All right.
Well, I have no questions. I know we've, we've had a boundary expansion and alteration a couple of years ago, and but I don't have any questions on the renewal here for you today. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't either.
All right.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the renewal of the retail marijuana cultivation facility license for JEM Dutch Acres.
Oh, second.
All right, any further discussion?
None for me.
None for me.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Patty. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to consideration of the Schum Cota contract. Tim and Anne, did you want to walk us through, through this? And Chris, maybe just tag on a little bit where we're at with legal review for, for this contract? Yep, Anne, go ahead.
I'm happy to do this. This is a contract with Schum's Cota, specifically Dan Weed, who has been assisting at the end of last year in his commit, would like to, we'd like to engage with him to continue helping as we work through the adoption of the new building code. And I do believe, and I apologize, this contract started with Paul Clarkson, and so I'm not sure to what degree that Chris has been able to look through it, or if there are any questions about it, but I have spoken to Mr. Weed, and he is available to continue his support into 2022, and he has not utilized the entirety of the contract from 2021. Ended that, all of that time with him yet.
I'm pretty sure we got your review on this one.
Yeah, and so just for background, it did start, they sent a letter to Mr. Clarkson back in early December. It was a proposal, and then what I did was just prepare the standard professional services agreement to send it over to them. And unfortunately, there's some tweaks to it because it still has Mr. Clarkson and stuff, so minor, minor revisions that need to be done, from my perspective at least, so that it can be approved and then submitted to them for signature and then back to you all. So my suggestion will be, if you have no other concerns to approve it pending final legal, so we can get the revised version with the updates, mostly changing the contact name to Anne, yes, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, because they had, they had, Paul did send that agreement that they returned signed, so yeah, we'll have to send that back.
Yeah, it was the original proposal that they sent that will become the Exhibit A to the professional services agreement.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Schum's Cota contract pending final legal review and updating, updated, with updated contact information.
Okay.
All second.
All right, any further discussion?
Nothing for me.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Next on our list is consideration of SEH Engineering Contract. Anne, I'm gonna hand it over to you again.
So SEH is our third-party engineering firm that conducts all of our assistance in application review. They are vital to our review process, and so we would very much like to continue that engagement with them. I did become aware that, that Chris has provided some revisions, and with the transition, I do not think that those revisions have been provided to SEH. So I will make sure that those are sent over to them.
Okay, so that would be contingent on legal review as?
Again, it's a similar situation as the last one in terms of just making sure the names are updated and that kind of stuff.
Okay, okay. Sarah, Jeff, do you have questions or comments for Anne?
Um, I also wanted to be sure that Legal looked at the termination clause on this one. And then I just have a side comment, nothing on necessarily other content in this agreement, but I'd just love to work with Anne and Tim and the Board to, to come up with a agreed-upon approach for how we engage our engineer with, with applicants in terms of timing and costs and what level of review we're clearly communicating to, to folks so that there aren't any surprise charges.
Were there any specific concerns with the termination type of review that it's?
I think that.
The, the county can terminate on seven days.
Okay.
Notice.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with that language.
Well, and it's the counties, that they, the county has the right to do that, and, and it has provision that if you do terminate, you just don't, the services perform prior to termination.
Prior to termination. Okay, good.
And Anne, I believe that we do this on an annual basis as well, right? Okay. Okay. I don't think that I have any other questions on this. Do either of you?
No.
All right, I will entertain a motion then for the approval of the SEH Engineering Contract contingent on final legal review.
That also moved?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Just to say that it's short, Elliot Hendrickson Incorporated.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, nothing else for me. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to our next item, which is consideration of SCED contract for housing work. I believe that Tim and Anne and Michael have worked on, on this to put this on the agenda, so I'll let Anne and Michael and Tim talk through this one as well.
Well, I'll start, it was the, Mike went, and I finished up. So when we originally started working on the work for the planning grant, we got notified by DOLA that we had to go through a new procurement process, which highlighted federal guidelines for procurement. And so we went through that, and SCED has been chosen through that RFP process as our contractor to help with the scope of the work for the planning grant. But we do need to now amend the professional services contract with the, the scope of work as outlined in their RFP proposal. So this has been just recently furnished to Chris, and so I think that we are also looking for approval of this pending legal, legal review.
And, and this one's pretty simple. I think all we need to do is amend the Exhibit A to incorporate this new one.
Okay.
I don't think there are any changes that need to be made to the actual agreement. It's just to amend the Exhibit A.
Okay.
New proposal.
Okay, great. Michael, do you have anything to add on this one?
No, I'm just very excited, and I appreciate everyone's patience in going through this. It's been a couple of extra months of going through what it requires to get the grant money, but good news is, is that it's a substantial amount to cover the costs of all of this work. So I'm really excited to get going and get started with the joint work session with the City Council and the Scoreboard, and really getting off on the right track and trying to get housing built in the next couple of years. So, super excited.
Wonderful, thank you so much. All right, I don't think that I have any questions. Sarah, Jeff, do you have any questions left for Anne or, or Michael or Tim or Chris?
I don't.
Yeah. All right. So I'll entertain a motion for the consideration of the SCED contract for housing work contingent on final legal review.
And are we just approving the expanded scope?
Yeah.
I guess to amend the existing project. Okay.
Right, that's it. It would be simple.
Okay, I move to approve the expansion of Lake County's engagement with SCED and that scope of work pending final legal review.
All second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right, nothing? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it, Anne and Michael. Thank you. All right, so we'll move into reports, minutes, bills, and payroll. Up first, we have minutes for the regular meeting held September 20th, 2021. Do you want to share your screen?
Sure, yes, I can. So I think the question here from a meeting or two ago was whether or not there was an agenda item that was missing. And so here are the minutes, and I know, Patty, I'm sorry if I didn't pull up your, your revised minutes. But the question was needed the approval of that, of submitting for that grant, and I believe that we should have that added in there. Maybe Patty could double-check that for us. On the, on our agenda listed for September 20th that I pulled up, we do have, we did have the presentation in form of consideration for the DOLA, DOLA grant application regarding House Bill 1272 and match consideration and the resolution. So I, I don't, I don't think that that's in the minutes, right? I don't think that's captured here.
Yeah.
Patty, would you, would you look back on that part of that meeting? Thank you. Okay. The next, I'll stop sharing. We'll pull up the next one. Is that December 6? Okay. Um, I don't think I had any comments on this in my review. This was a joint meeting with the city, and we talked through some housing strategies with SCED. So I don't, I don't have any comments for this one, if, if either of you did.
I don't think so. I don't have anything.
Okay.
I didn't see anything.
Okay. So that was December 6th. That looks okay. And then December 14th. I think we opened this meeting to table for the, the meeting the next morning on the
Budget hearing?
Yeah, on the budget hearing. So this one was relatively short. I think it was only a few minutes long, the meeting that was opened here, because we had posted it for the 14th. So no, I have no suggested changes on that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Took all these things up. So this is the 15th on the budget hearing. My only suggestions were to, to the committee fund, Lake County Committee Fund, and punctuation and stuff, and spelling out titles completely, but that's, that's all I had for the 14th, 15th.
Okay. I don't have anything else on there.
I'll move to the next. The 27th, is that the last one?
Uh, December 20th.
Oh, the 20th.
Yeah, and then the 27th.
Okay, I do have one comment on the 20th. Okay, there's a paragraph in here. Okay, there's a paragraph in here where it says all commissioners voted in favor, but I don't think there was a, um, it was a opening bid proposals. So there wasn't a motion. So I just struck that. Patty, if that makes sense. On, um, what's the topic? The next item, opening proposals.
Oh, the proposals for the project management at the Justice Center.
So I don't think there was, I think it was just opening them.
Yeah, there wasn't a vote on that.
So there wasn't a vote? Um. And then the very next paragraph, Patty, there was a document, um, the authorization for assignment document. Um. I just wondered, I don't know how many of those we've done. I just wondered if there was a better reference to actually like that formalized document. Then often. Any suggestions? Or should you put all the, all vote in favor, um, the formal authorization for assignment is recorded in the clerk's office or something?
Maybe. Yeah, that would work. Okay.
And I also want to make sure you have that.
Okay.
All right. So that's all that I had on the 20th.
Okay. The 27th.
And then the 27th should be the last. Did my screen change?
Um.
Probably not.
No.
Um, the only comment I had here was just replacing my first name with Commissioner Much. In that, um, second paragraph.
Oh.
All right. That's it?
Okay.
Any other comments?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. So all of those, with the exception of September 20th, because we're waiting to see, could we align the agenda items with what's reflected in the notes?
Yeah, I think there might be an agenda item missing there. Um, and then maybe those names, those titles of those, uh, C4 and the community fund, just some of the grammar and the full names spelled out in that. I'm sorry. I forget if it was the 6th, December 6th or 14th. No, it had to be the 6th.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. Okay. And, uh, that strike of the voting, my name change.
Yeah.
And the, uh, reference to the agreement for authorization on that driveway.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
All right. So you feel good moving forward with those then?
Yes.
With the, with the pending changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'll move to approve the minutes from December 6th, regular meeting, the minutes from special meeting held December 14th. The minutes from the special meeting held December 15th. The minutes from the regular meeting held December 20th and the minutes from the special meeting held December 27th. Um, to include changes noted in discussion.
Second.
So, yeah. When I faced off for a second, I wasn't sure if you moved or were looking for a, some of that.
I moved it. Okay. I made the motion.
All right. Any further discussion?
Made the moves. No further discussion for me.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Wonderful.
And I'll move to approve bills and payroll for pay period ending January 28th, 2021.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Um, we don't, uh, Jonathan is still with us. Jonathan, do you have any additional public comments?
I do not. I do not.
All right. Thank you so much for joining us today, Jonathan. We appreciate it. Um, seeing nothing further on the agenda for today, we will adjourn at 1:36 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.